Good evening. The Superintendent of Schools has informed the Board of Education that she will not recommend that Karen Shivley, a probationary teaching assistant, be granted tenure at the end of her probationary period. I'm requesting that the district clerk note in the minutes that the Board has reviewed the superintendent's recommendation against the grant of tenure. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
To...
Second.
...discuss employment issues, history for particular persons being considered for Board action this evening. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We're in closed session. Will you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first of my items on our agenda is statements from the public. And our first speaker is Ed Rush. Yes, go to the microphone, you have four minutes.
Is this on? Is it working? Okay, I can't hear it. Yeah, my name's Ed Rush, I'm the Chief of the Hartsdale Fire Department, and I'm here on behalf of the Hartsdale Board of Fire Commissioners, they asked me to come tonight and address you. The fire district and the school board have always had a very, very good working relationship. We work extremely well together, we help each other on a lot of things, but the two boards have always stayed out of each other's politics. And the Hartsdale Board of Fire Commissioners was very disappointed that the Board of Education interjected itself into the fire commissioner elections this year, and with one of the board trustees identifying themselves as a trustee and making a robo-call for one of the candidates. Again, it has nothing to do with who the candidates are, who was running or anything, it was just that the Board of Fire Commissioners were disappointed that the school board was taking sides and getting involved in the fire district elections. So they asked me to just come tonight and express disappointment of the Board of Fire Commissioners on that, and just ask if the school board has any comment on that.
Sure. The Board of Education did not take a position on the fire district election, we generally don't do that. Legally, as long as the person putting forth the message did not represent that what they said was the position of the Board of Education, they're in clear. The other requirement is that no district resources can be used for having anything to do with the election, and if I understand the message involved, it was paid for by another organization. So the Board of Education as an organization did not get involved in the election. Terry, you wish to ask a question? Go ahead.
Yes. Chief Rush, as you know, I'm a former fire commissioner in the Fairview Fire District. And typically commissioners restrict themselves to policy discussions, and the staff, like yourself, restrict your comments to firematic discussions. And the two sides do not overlap. I'm a little surprised that members from the Hartsdale Fire Commission didn't come here directly. We didn't, we don't send, when I was a fire commissioner, we didn't send, it was the late Chief Morrow who was the chief, we didn't send him on our behalf, we sent our president to make comments for the commission. We didn't send the fire chief. Fire chief does firematic stuff. Secondly, and let me be clear here, I heard the message, your exact words a moment ago was this, "The Board of Fire Commissioners asked that you address the Board of Education for interjecting itself into the elections." We did not interject ourselves, nor did our colleague who spoke. The only thing she did is she identified herself as a board member, which she has the right to do. It conveys a certain level of leadership, she's an elected official, and she has the right to do that. I do that. But she clearly stated in that call that she was not speaking on behalf, she was speaking as an independent citizen. That was clear. Now, I know in the heat of a call, one might not hear clearly, but with the passage of time, you have had the time to, and you, and again, you're speaking on behalf of the other fire commissioners, you all have had the time to listen to that message and say, "Okay, she really wasn't speaking on behalf of the Board of Education." So I find it troublesome that you would come here and perpetuate that error. You may not like what my colleague said, and quite frankly, I don't, I have no position on what my colleague said either, but she has a right to say it, she said it in the right manner, and it is unequivocally clear that she was not representing the Board of Education. And I hope we continue to have a good relationship, I see no reason why, but I'm not going to sit here and allow my colleague to be mischaracterized, and our board to be mischaracterized, because as you said, the Board of Education interjected itself into the fire commission elections. We did not interject ourselves, and my colleague did not interject the board. Thank you.
You have two minutes and 53 seconds. Go ahead.
Just to reply to that, the Board of Fire Commissioners asked me to represent them tonight, that's, you know, Fairview's policy is Fairview's policy, Hartsdale is Hartsdale. Yes, for the most part, I deal with the operations, but I also act as a spokesperson for the Board at times when, you know, when they ask me, so from that standpoint. And again, the, just in looking at the text of the call, the first thing that was said is, you know, "Hi, my name is Tracy Mary, I'm your school district trustee, and I'm calling on behalf of Warner Friday." Yes, after that, she doesn't want to say, "As a private citizen," but if I were to, you know, or anybody, if the first thing you do, and then again, I'm just relaying the feelings of the Board, when the first thing is that they're identifying themselves as a trustee of an organization, everything that happens after that is, comes across as an opinion potentially of that organization. And that's the only thing that, you know, we will continue to have an excellent relationship, the Board just wanted to express to your Board that there was disappointment that there was, you know, the interjection of it, whether it was the opinion of the Board or not, the appearance was that as a trustee, she was speaking out on behalf, you know, with an opinion in the election. As well, I'm just relaying the message.
Thank you.
Leave it here.
Yeah. Our next speaker is Sylvia Simon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I came specifically to thank David Warner, because I have been coming to engagement meetings, community meetings, for several years, and I want to thank you for always making sure that you focus on the things that we want and follow up. But most importantly, this last time, we were very, very concerned with technology, and we kept pushing and talking about it, and we had a wonderful workshop given by Carlos Ramirez, which really gave us a good overview of what's going to be happening with technology number one, and more importantly, how strategically it's going to implement the technology plan. So I just think it's, you know, sometimes we don't say thank you when we should, and you went out of your way to get him to come and make that presentation for us, and I want to thank you. Also, I want to say that a lot of parents are apprehensive about the departmentalization, and I was too, especially as it got to be younger children, but I have to tell you, my granddaughter told me to tell you, it keeps her from being bored. She loves it, because she gets to move around and to get new teachers each time, and it keeps her engaged. And I guess out of the bounds of babies, so I know there's probably, you're still tweaking it, but so far, it seems to be working. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Thomas Tokarski.
My name is Thomas Tokarski. I'm a science teacher at the district for 17 years. I wasn't going to speak tonight, I'm here for a different reason, and I happen to read the Board minutes. So I've been a science teacher for 17 years. I've known Mr. Smith for 10 of those years. As the athletic director, he revamped the sports program to a new level. This gave a real boost to the student athletes in the district, which also helped my tennis program by bringing new stuff and almost getting new courts. As we hit some stormy waters in the high school, he came in, stepped in, kind of stabilized the ship. It's been three and a half years, as also the union vice president, Mr. Smith and I have had some robust discussions. But in the end, whether we agree or we agree to disagree, his professionalism has always prevailed. I want to thank the Board for making this decision, and I look forward to working with Mr. Smith in the future in various capacities, whether it's science, whether it's athletics, and say congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the statements from the public. Highview Elementary School, take it away. Good evening.
So in the past, our Board presentations have been in the cafeteria, we have graduated to the gym for a few reasons. One, because we had a book club this evening, and the book club usually takes precedent because they've been going on forever, and the book club was in the cafeteria. But I also wanted to show off our new screen. We got it over the summer, and thanks to Mr. Falcone and our facilities director and the custodial staff at Highview School, they were able to use some extra strong brackets and get it up there, and now we have a screen that we were proud of, so we wanted to bring the meetings here. So I have, I didn't realize there were so many people here. We just rehearsed a little bit in my office, and because my office is smaller, it seemed like there were fewer people. So the first thing I want to do is I want to thank the Board for allowing us the time to present some of our highlights of the year at Highview School, and one of our biggest highlights is right here. We have a new mascot, and his name is Perry. And Perry is the mascot for, I believe, is it ECP and Lee F. Jackson and Highview School? So, all right, I'll share a secret. Get a look at this gym floor, because it's going away around the springtime, we are going to close up our gym for about three weeks, we are getting a new gym floor, and truth be told, right in the center where you see that big circle, this guy's going to be there. So we're going to have a big logo of Perry the Falcon right in the center of our gym, and we're very excited about that. So you can go tell everyone, it's set up in March, and it'll be here in sometime in April. So we have some presentations tonight, and we're going to focus on math, we're going to talk about science, we're going to talk about Mandarin, and we're going to talk about the continued success in reading, and then Highview helpers. So we have five different items that we're going to talk about tonight, four of them are brand new to Highview this year. So without any further delay, I'm going to turn it over to our math experts in third grade, Ms. Christina DeLillo, and in second grade, Ms. Laura Martin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christine DeLillo, I'm one of the third grade math teachers here at Highview, and today I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our new math and focus program. This is a new program adopted this year at Highview. It is a program that has started from kindergarten through third grade, this year in the Greenberg School District. This year, the students are focusing on building conceptual understanding through problem solving. They're focusing on more of the why and how of instruction through hands-on learning. The program goes through different stages. So in the beginning, the students use a lot of concrete manipulatives. They use physical objects to move around with their hands, and then they move toward a pictorial aspect of it, where they design pictures, and they use pictures to help them understand certain concepts, and then they go more toward the abstract, the numerical part of it. There are clear and engaging visuals that present concepts to them. It's very different than the program we used last year, it's more of a kid-friendly program, very engaging to them, especially using many manipulatives throughout the lesson. Time is built into the program as well to design activities that have appropriate scaffolding, guided learning, extensive skills and practices within the lesson. There are components within this program that are geared toward ENL students, students that are struggling, and those that need a little bit more enrichment. Laura Martin's going to talk a little bit about what they do in the second grade, and then I'll come back to third grade topics.
Thank you very much. I'm Laura Martin, I'm one of the second grade teachers here at Highview Elementary School. So just to go off of what Christina said, some of the components that second grade really enjoys using with this program is the textbook component, the digital component. The program also offers a reteach and an extra practice section, so this really allows for us to shape our lessons according to what we think our students need. There's also an enrichment portion to the program, which really helps us target our different math levels within our own class. For each lesson and for each chapter, actually, there is a pre and a post-test, which really helps us to continue to assess our students and really see what area we need to target as we move forward with our lessons. This then post-test assessment at the end of each chapter is then revisited again at the end of the unit. Some of the components that we talk about in second grade are developing a strong foundation in place value, using tools such as bar models and bonds. We start introducing multiplication a lot earlier in this program as compared to previous programs that we've used for math. We describe writing fractions as equal parts and recognizing shapes and so forth.
In third grade, we take those skills that they've learned in the second grade and build upon them. So in the beginning of the school year, we also talked about place value, addition, subtraction, just strengthening those foundational skills that they have developed from kindergarten to first grade and second grade, and then just strengthening them as well in the third grade. So we talk about problem-solving skills. We use models such as bar models, we've introduced tape diagrams within all four operations, addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. We make and interpret data from bar graphs, we go into greater detail than second grade about fractions from a set, talking about angles and lines, and we understand area and perimeter of figures. You know, besides this program, we've also introduced other resources as well, just to help strengthen the student's skills. We use iExcel, we use iReady. We do a lot of group work activities. If you can see in the top left, this is one of my classes, in the beginning of the year when we were talking about addition, just strengthening our addition skills. The student in this picture is using addition spinners, where they have to spin it, and whatever number lands on, they have to add. And then if you go to the bottom-left picture, students, again, using manipulatives such as rods and cubes to create a concrete visual for addition, subtraction, as a baseline first, before they can move on to just regular addition, subtraction with numbers. If you go to the bottom-right picture, that is my class, my homeroom class, in the beginning of multiplication, using cubes to make arrays. And then in the top picture on the right, again, those are students using dry erase boards, again, with manipulatives. This program is different than last year because it's more of a student discussion, student-led discussion. It's more of the teacher asking questions and having the students come up with their answers, so that us as teachers, we can see whether they truly understand the concept or not.
Quick question.
Yes.
Do they, you've actually talked about multiplication, you've talked about area, I'm amazed, do they do volume?
We do that later in the year. So this third grade, we've already touched on addition, subtraction, we're in the middle of our multiplication unit, and they go back and forth between multiplication and division. And then we do bring up area, because area has to do with multiplication as well. So they're exposed to a lot, which is excellent, so when the time comes, they have already been exposed, so it's nothing new to them. They just have to strengthen that skill.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Again, this is some more hands-on learning, this is another class on the rug, working on expanded forms. So they have those colored dye on the mat, and they roll it, and whatever number comes up, that's their four-digit number that they have to write in expanded form, words form. On the bottom is another group in the beginning of multiplication, where they're using stickers to create equal groups. Again, try to incorporate as many hands-on activities as possible. And then, again, this is also part of the multiplication unit, using graph paper to highlight and create different arrays, and they're matching multiplication sentences. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm back. We're going to talk about science fusion now, which I'm super excited about, I'm a big science fanatic. The new program that we have this year is called Science Fusion. This program is a blend of print inquiry and digital, so there's a whole lot of materials that come with this program, but it really allows for us to develop our lessons whichever way we feel is needed for the students to understand the concepts being taught. For print, we have write-in student edition books, notebooks, we have textbooks, they have even little easy guided readers that we can carry over into our reading groups in our ELA sessions. For inquiry, we have our flip charts and labs, which also incorporate virtual labs, that's included in the digital portion. I'll have a visual for that in the upcoming slides. And then for our digital portion, we have the parallel digital curriculum, which students and teachers have full access to. They can go on and see their digital lessons, virtual labs, us as teachers can create an account for each student, and the student can then go on and access any assignment that we post for them. Each lesson is outlined using the five E model, levels of inquiry, breaking up the lesson with engage portion, explore portion, explain, extend, and then finishing up with evaluate. So Verily's going to talk a little bit more about that.
Good evening. Verily Woodward, third grade, social studies and science teacher of Team A. As Laura stated, Science Fusion is an engaging science and engineering program that allows students to explore concepts, vocabulary, build inquiry, STEM, and 21st century skills. Also math, ELA, science, next-gen standards are incorporated into each and every unit and lesson.
So this is a visual of Think Central, which is the online component, the digital component of their program. This is kind of just a snapshot of what a student would see when they log into their account, and if you see right in the middle, they have, one assignment would be posted. So assignments can range anything from a digital lesson, a digital lab, or an assessment of some sort, or even just a reread of a textbook chapter page that we want them to further review. And this is what a digital lab would look like. So it would be a video, but this is just a still shot of it, where students in this, for instance, for this lab, they are categorizing animals according to different traits that they have. The labs generally would come after a few lessons have been taught in this area, and then they would get the chance to kind of go further and explore the skill for that lesson. This is a screenshot of a digital lesson, so once again, after we've already introduced it through class discussion or through readings, the student would be able to then go on to the Think Central website and to the assigned lesson by the teacher, and they'll be able to further their knowledge and reiterate everything that was discussed prior in the lesson. So this is just some of the units that are addressed in each grade. We color-coded them, because you can see that there's nature of science, STEM, life science, earth science, and physical sciences. Each grade covers these different components. The ones, the color-coded ones you can see go across for each grade, some a little bit more than the other grades, some a little bit less. I would say in our grade right now, we finished Unit 1 and 2. We are currently moving on, we changed our units around a little bit, just so that they coincide with some of our other programs, our social studies, our ELA, just kind of where we feel that they fit better with what we have done in the past. But nonetheless, we still will be hitting everything, we just kind of moved the schedule around a bit. So our next unit of study will be moving into changes in matter.
As Laura has stated, as well as they did in second grade, but in third grade, we moved units of study around, so it can coincide with social studies units as well as ELA units of study. At the beginning of the school year, we completed Unit 1, which is investigating questions, and we just completed Unit 5, Changes to Earth's Surface. And when we come back from the winter recess, we will be going into Unit 3, Plants and Animals. But each unit has a big idea, and that big idea focuses on what the students will be learning throughout the entire unit, and each unit also has at least four to six essential questions that guide students' thinking. They also have investigations and experiments through each unit of study. This is one of my third grade classes here, they were modeling erosion, and there's a brick on a scale, and they had to weigh the brick, students had to weigh the brick before the experiment and after the experiment. So during a week's time span, the students placed a brick inside of a container filled with water, and each day they would shake the water, excuse me, the container, and that would model weathering. At the end of the experiment, they had to weigh that brick and find the difference, math, they had to find the difference in the weight of the brick. This lesson we just completed this week, actually, it is erosion again, and how glaciers affect the land around it. So students used sand, which represented rocks and soil, the clay represented the land, also the ice cube represented the glacier, and students were able to compare what happens when a glacier slides across land. Thank you.
One question before we move on. You mentioned that you were moving some science units around to correspond with some certain social studies units. What kinds of points in history or units of study, where do they correspond?
Well, the last unit of study was, thank you, Changes to the Earth's Surface. So in social studies, there was a unit on the earth and the different landforms, and students identified the different landforms, but in this unit of study, we studied changes to the earth's.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Ni hao, everybody. So I'm the Mandarin teacher in Highview Elementary School, so Mr. M just gave everybody two worksheets, so one is about our, yes, so, yeah, you can first look at them. So the first one is word search, the next one is a family of the snowmen. So when everybody gets the worksheet, you can look at here. So two points. So the first one is still the three modes of communication. So in the previous Board of Education meeting, I talked about those three modes of communication, which I used also in this whole new unit. which I used also in this whole new unit, family. So interpersonal, interpretive, and presentational. Those are very important in my teaching. So I want to first introduce interpretive. So as you can see, you have a word search. This is a little bit similar like English, but it's even more complex because all of these are Chinese. So students not only need to find out, find out the family members, and also they need to count how many points they can get in 10 minutes. Guess, one of the highest points in third grade student, he actually got 21 points, and the average person, they can get about 17 points in 10 minutes. So in, by using this worksheet, students not only be familiar with their characters, but also they review the family members, and they also really excited about this because it's kind of like 10 minutes, let's see who can get the highest point. After the individual work, students gonna have a pair of work. They're gonna share with their partners, oh, I got this one, do you have this one? After five minutes of sharing, we're gonna do that together by using the smart board. So this is activity about interpretive. So the presentational is another one, which has lots of cute snowmen. So this one is, oh, okay, so this one. There are five family members. I use Chinese characters. So students, they just have four snowmen over here. So first, they need to identify which snowman represent baba, which baba in Mandarin means dad. And then they need to paste and glue. So, so one is a character, one of family member do not have a snowman, it's myself. So which means students, they need to draw themselves as a snowman. After that, they're gonna put them together, then they got a whole family of snowmen. Then after this, they need to present, okay, zhè shì wǒ de baba. This is my dad, this is, as a snowman. And after that, students, they are very happy, they took it at home, and they gave this to their parents as a Christmas gift. And after that, yeah, I want to share something about the second language learning, which is I plus one. So the first, so I use I plus one series in two ways. First is in my classroom, so kind of student, not only they learn something like the vocabulary, like words, but also when I start the class, I use Mandarin to tell them every day, like something like, if you have any question, please raise your hand. I use in Mandarin. So students get familiar with those words, and they kind of get know what does that mean, and they be familiar with those words, like, please stand up, or please sit down. And also, another thing is that I use this I plus one in the assessment. So the assessment is that students, everybody, they have a small board, that they can erase all of them. So my test, it's not actually a test, it's a small assessment. Students, they need to listen very carefully, they need to get out the, get, get the keywords and write down their meanings. So I will give the sentence totally in Mandarin, but those sentences, they just have some words they are very familiar with, for example, like family members, but I gonna say that in a sentence. So some words they are not very familiar, but they can get it by using the keyword. So this also helps them to get familiar with the character, with the character and the words which related with those core vocabularies. So the next page shows how it is worked. So at the center of that is the vocabulary about family members, and after that is a target language structures, for example, like I love my mom or dad, who, who is he or he is, like this. So after students learn the target language, after they listening for lots of time what I said about this, they finally can get, get the conversation, the presentation. This is a whole target for my unit of family, so they can talk about their families, they're gonna show their family pictures and tell everybody, this is my dad, this is my mom, this is my puppy, and they also learn the puppy. Yes, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Cristello. I'm the second grade reading teacher at Highview.
Mike McCall, third grade reading teacher.
All right, we're going to talk about Foundations Year Two, what it looks like. Here we have a few snapshots of both of our second and third graders actively engaged in some of our foundations activities. First and foremost, I think it's important to mention that Year Two has blown us all away at Highview. We have improved test scores in both second and third grade, I believe, all around. Having the first graders come up with such a strong background has really helped with the progress this year as we started.
Year Two for us looks a little bit different. It's definitely more in-depth. For instance, we're now using the intervention model that Wilson, which is the company that makes this program, recommends. So we are both doing foundations intervention in addition to the foundations that takes place in the classroom. We also have four scheduled visits from a coach. We've already had two of those, with two to come, which have been rousing successes with the teachers. These are just a few of the reading initiatives that we have going on here at Highview. Some are new, some we've seen for a while. This is Year Four with Bradley the Reading Dog. Mona, give a, give a wave. If anyone, if you can peek, you got Bradley down there. There he is. Not only is Bradley a reading dog, but if you look in that picture right there, he's actually a coding dog, too. That's Bradley coding with the kids. Bradley is currently seeing every single classroom in Highview, including the special ed classrooms, the self-contained classrooms, students that we work with, as well as students that Mr. Polanco works with, who is our ESL teacher.
Some of you may remember, we had bunkies start last year, and it was such a huge success, we brought it back this year. Instead of just being in second grade, we have now expanded into third grade as well. We have 24 students in the program. They read, second grade reads on Tuesdays, third grade reads on Thursdays. These students give up their lunch in recess one day a week to come and read with an adult, and it's really magical to see what happens in there. New this year is the Smart Buddy Program. With the help of Dr. Chase, we were able to put this in our after-school program, not during the school day. Students and adults read together in the Buddy Program after school for one hour on Thursdays. We have 20 volunteers who come in, ranging from high school students to retirees, as well as 20 second and third graders. They are mentors, they work on homework together, and then they spend extra time reading at the end of the day.
Our last bullet point is a tried and true tradition here at Highview. It's the Rotary Club readers. Every year, we have members, volunteers from the Rotary Club come and read to the classes at Highview. We have this, again, this year. Actually, our Rotary date is tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken, where the students will be reading about Christmas, and I think some of the representations of Santa Claus from around the world, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Melissa Dupree, the school psychologist at Highview. Mrs. Kelly and I are very excited to share our new program with everyone that we started this year called the Highview Helpers, and it is a staff-student mentoring program. So many of our staff members have volunteered to work with a student on a weekly basis. We're really hoping that this will provide another adult for our students in the building that they can seek out, get support from, and really foster that positive relationship with. Our goal is for, as it is with all of our students, to increase the sense of community they have with us here at Highview, as well as increase their own levels of self-esteem and self-confidence. And we're hoping that this will then help them and feel really a great motivation to succeed at school.
So the way it works, we, again, have approximately 30 students who are identified and paired up with volunteer staff members here at Highview. And one of the highlights so far for me was Melissa and I got to go around and give the assignments out to the staff members, and they were so excited to watch them open the papers and see who their child was going to be. It was, it was really cool. It was. The way it works, Melissa touched on this, but weekly meetings, and really, we want the kids to be able to share their lives, their interests, their hobbies, all the things that kids love to talk about. If they need support in any kind of particular individualized way, that mentor will be available to them. That could be academic, that could be social, that could be a whole gamut of different kinds of things. Also, social decision-making is something we would be working on, and just basically support and encouragement to really individualize relationships with different students.
Okay. And then, there are many examples of how our staff mentors can meet with our students. It can really be at any time during the school day, depending on what works best for that relationship with that staff member and that student. For example, students can join their helper during lunch. They can invite their helper to recess with them. They might need help in a specific subject area, maybe math, and their helper happens to be an expert in math. So maybe during a win period, they can sit together and work on math facts. They can also set up check-ins every morning, whether it's during breakfast or during homeroom, just to help them really get their day set up and help them have a successful day. The last thing that we did just want to share with everyone that really struck a chord with us is that research has shown that it takes just one adult to really make a difference in a child's life. So we are hoping that our helpers can make that difference in our students' lives. Thank you.
So that concludes, I actually, I don't know why it didn't work here, but the last slide actually said thank you in about 30 or 40 different languages. So I'm upset that that didn't come out, but if you want, after the meeting, come into my office and I can show you the slide. It works up there, but I'm sorry. Thank you very, very much for giving us the opportunity. We may have gone over a little, and I apologize for that, but we did have a lot of new initiatives that we wanted to talk about, and hope you enjoyed them. And if anyone has any questions about anything that you saw here this evening, please ask. And there is apparent coffee tomorrow that Mr. Warner ends up coming to every month. We do have apparent coffee tomorrow at nine o'clock, and the gym is actually set up right now, as you can see, for our winter solstice tomorrow at 10 o'clock. So we have a lot going on in the final three days before, before the vacation. So if I don't get a chance to see any of you beyond tonight, I'd like to wish all of you a very, very happy, restful, safe, fun holiday season with you and your friends and your family. And as that old silly saying goes, I'll see you next year. So thank you very much. Any further questions, Ms. Ward?
Yes, David.
Hearing none, we move on. Thank you, that was content rich. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I just wanted to say, I'm really, really happy to hear about the helpers and the staff-to-student connectors that you're doing. That's really awesome. Just the social and emotional support with, with education, looking at multi-tiered systems of support. I think that's excellent. So I just wanted to say that I had, my children were here, and we did not have that, and I did not know about that program, so thank you.
When we talked about this program, we did not expect 30 staff volunteers. We thought it was going to be three or four, based on schedules and availability. And when we addressed this at a faculty meeting, we left the forms out on, on the, on the desk, and before you know it, Ms. Kelly and Ms. Dupree had over 30. I think we had 31 staff members.
Excellent, thank you.
Which means we were able to work with 31. And there are, actually, I will tell you, there are a couple of staff members who said, you know what, I have time, I'll take two kids. So we have more than 30 students in the program because we have at least 30 staff members. So it's, it took off a lot bit, more than we thought it would, and we're really, really happy about that.
Thank you. I just want to say one more thing, and there's a community member that's not here tonight, but she does come to a lot of our meetings and a lot of committee meetings and, and events. And she always says, and you'll probably know who it is, students don't care how much you know, they care how much you care. And so, everything that we do here is wonderful. We have lots of good programming, we have exceptional students, but until they know that we care, they're not going to learn. So that's amazing. Just want to thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to take things a little bit out of order here. I'm going to skip over to, I'm going to single out just two items for a little bit of early approvals. Those are personnel, instructional personnel items two and three. Instructional personnel items two and three. They are tenure-related. Do I hear a motion to pass instructional items two and three?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, you have tenure.
Can I have two minutes?
Go ahead. It's beautiful.
Come see us.
Come.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so proud of you.
Beautiful presentation. So, just so that those who are watching us at home, and those who are here, will just understand the reason why these people ended up getting tenure tonight. I want to speak first about Ms. Rachel Laurie. Ms. Rachel Laurie brought to our school district a level of respect for our LEGO Robotics program. When Ms. Laurie was hired, our LEGO Robotics program was in dire need of a rehaul, an overhaul, excuse me. And her charge was to make magic with it. Well, not only did you make magic, you brought us to the regional. We became regional champs because of you and your hard work. And so we thank you for your dedication. We thank you for all that you do. You work with a population of students who absolutely adore you and who rely on you every single day. You find what interests them, and you use that to teach them. That's what good teaching looks like, and that's what good teaching sounds like. So it was no doubt that you've earned your tenure because you are an amazing teacher, an amazing educator, an amazing mentor. Some people may not understand what you do, and some people may look at it as chaos in a classroom, but it's not. Kids are learning, kids are happy, kids are glad to be in your classroom, and so we thank you for all that you've done, and we congratulate you on this wonderful honor, and we know the best is yet to come. Congratulations. What, what the community needs to know is that Ms. Laurie will also be working with our IB team, and she'll be one of our IB teachers as we move toward diploma status, and so we're very, very proud of you, and we thank you for taking this plunge with us. Thank you so much. Mr. Smith. Hi. Question is, how are you? You should, you should feel great. When I became the interim superintendent three years ago, we had an unfortunate situation at the high school, where I was in need of a high school principal. Mr. Smith was the athletic director slash assistant principal, and I said, I'm down administrator, I need someone to lead the building. Without hesitation, he said yes. There were some people who doubted his ability to lead. I heard all the comments. Ignore them because what I saw in this young man was a fire, what I saw in him was a passion, what I saw in him was the will to strive to be better than what he was the day before. That is why Mr. Smith has earned tenure. No, you're not my favorite administrator, even though people say that. I had to go there. Because that's the word on the street. No, he's not my favorite. He's just a great administrator. He's strong-willed, he loves the kids. When you walk with Mr. Smith down the halls, the kids, hey, Mr. Smith, there's a level of respect that you of respect that you just can't describe. You've earned this moment. You worked really hard. There was a time where you were the only administrator in the building, and you were running it. You never complained about being the athletic director, the assistant principal, the principal, the guidance counselor, and everything else in between. And there were people who said you wore too many hats and that you couldn't do it, but you proved otherwise that you could do it. I am proud of you. You've done a phenomenal job. I've watched you spend countless hours in that building. There are times I told you to go home. You are dedicated to what it is that you do. You obviously love what it is that you do. You're reflective, you don't mind admitting a mistake, you don't blame others when something doesn't go right. You take full responsibility. You have great leadership qualities, and it was my honor, and it was just such a joy for me to speak to my board on your behalf to recommend your tenure. I look forward to great things to come. You're a great dad, obviously, great husband, great son, great brother, you're a great principal also. Keep up the good work, Mr. Smith. You've made history tonight. You made history tonight. I'm proud of you. No, he's not my favorite. Stop it. I would say that for any administrator who earns tenure. Tenure's a big deal, ladies and gentlemen. It's, we don't just give tenure away. It is earned in this school district, and unfortunately, it's just, not everyone gets it. And you know, when you are an administrator, it's so much easier for everyone to be in the audience and say, "Well, if I was Mr. Smith, I would do it this way. If I was Dr. Chase, I would do it that way." We have so many sidebar superintendents and principals, but sitting in that seat is a total different thing. And this man worked very, very hard. Some of you may not know the challenges that he faced and still overcame them. Everything he is getting tonight, he rightfully earned. Has nothing to do with being a favorite. Has all to do with this man being a man of integrity. This is a decent human being, and he deserves this honor. Never, ever did he complain. He's fair, and some people may not like his decisions, too bad, but it's in the best interest of children. And that's what he's about. He's about kids. You rock, Mr. Smith. Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Mr. Newland?
And thank you.
I would just like to echo what Dr. Chase just said. She just about said everything. So all I can do is echo this, but I just want to let you know I'm very pleased we were, this district was very blessed to have you on the spot when we needed you, as Dr. Chase said. We were in need of a principal, we were in need of an athletic director, and you've done all of that. And I just wanted to say that I'm extremely proud of you and always eager to support you. You did a fantastic job, and you brought back the graduation back on this campus, which I think was a risky task, but you did an excellent job.
It paid off.
And it paid off very much. So I'd just like to say that you are a very, very valuable asset to this district, and as long as I'm on this board, you will forever have my support. Good luck.
I've been in and out of the high school volunteering for Y's, and I have to say, I've seen more than one principal in that building over the years, and I am impressed with you. You get the job done, you're fair to everyone, and you are well-respected in the building. So thank you, I'm glad you're there. Anybody else?
I just want to say, as a parent of a student at Woodlands Middle High School, I've worked closely with Mrs. Smith for a very long time, and the only thing I can say is, when you put children first, all day, every day, you have my respect and support. So I thank you for all that you do.
Can I make a comment?
Anybody else?
So, Mr. Smith, I'm one of your school board liaisons, and I've attended a couple of meetings that you've had with parents. I do like the way that you interact with parents, but I do want to say that I've only heard of Mr. Smith a few years ago, when my daughter was in pre-K with your son. And I don't know if you even knew that, but I worked alongside one of your family members who used to talk a lot about how much you cared so much for the students that you worked with. I believe you were the athletic director at the time, and how much you really were interested in Greenberg and cared about the Greenberg children. And so that sticks with me when we hear about things that happen in the high school, or how Mr. Smith may handle something, or what Mr. Smith wants to do. That sticks with me because that speaks to your character even before you were the principal. So continue to display great character, and your kids seem to be very well-behaved, which is great, because my kids would be muddling all over. So, so good job, and continue the good work.
Anyone else?
Yes, I just want to say something to Mrs. Smith. Most people don't understand the sacrifice of an administrator when you have a family. You know, I have young children at home and a family, and this gentleman does not miss a beat here, and I know he's here late, I know he's here on the weekends, and you have loaned him to us, and you have sacrificed so much in this man getting to this moment. And so as a woman, as a mother, I just want to say thank you so much, because I know what that means. This moment means to you, and I thank Milan and I thank Mason for sacrificing their daddy. It's a big deal. So thank you, and that's important to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. All right, moving on to policy presentations. We have one policy amendment to be considered for board adoption at the January 16, 2018 meeting concerning the Audit Committee. Copies of this policy are available in the district clerk's office. There are also copies over on the table and aside here. They're also available in all school buildings and on our website. All comments concerning this policy should be submitted in writing to the Board of Education. Thank you. Next up, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Chase?
Good evening once again.
Good evening.
I do want, I want to congratulate Highview Elementary School for a job well done. I don't see Gary Mastrangelo. I think he took his staff, but hopefully they'll be able to watch the archived video. I just want to say thank you. You know, Highview took a plunge this year with following along, Ms. Verilli is here, you'll relay that message, took a plunge this year with the departmentalization. It was a big deal. It was something new, and you've took it with stride, and it is apparent that our students are getting a full complement of the four core subjects, and it was so evident today. And I appreciate Mrs. Simon's comments on how the departmentalization is working. It wasn't easy, and yeah, there are still bumps in the road, but we're getting there, and the most important thing is that our kids are learning. That's what's most important. So I thank the Highview School for sharing. I too share Ms. Mayor's sentiments that the helping buddies, I don't know what it was called, I didn't write it down.
Highview helpers.
The Highview helpers. The Highview helpers, it's a very excellent idea. I think that's great, and I'd love to see that replicated in other places too, and having the teachers serve as mentors. I want to congratulate Ms. Rachel Laurie. I know we spent a lot of time on your principal, but you rock, girl. So you just need to hear that as well. You are an amazing special education teacher, and I think Ms. Luwanga shares those sentiments. So we'll make sure Ms. Luwanga's at every tenure meeting, because she is definitely the cheerleader. And while I have Ms. Luwanga's attention, I'm so proud of this lady because she and I are working together in building a mentorship program for young ladies. Saturday, while most of us are enjoying our break, Ms. Luwanga and Ms. Stacy Preston, the one who's in red sitting next to her, raise your hand, Stacy. There you go, will be taking twenty-eight young ladies into the city as part of our kickoff to our mentorship program. Without hesitation, I was able to get tickets, and without hesitation, I said, "Ladies, I need chaperones, I won't be there." Laurie and Stacy said, "We got them." This is, I know Mr. Tokarski, say whatever you want to say, they're on vacation, but they're going. They did, and so ladies, I thank you so much for that, and I look forward to our continued work together as we develop these beautiful young ladies. I just want to share with the community our sentiments and our thanks on behalf of all the schools for attending our winter festivities, our concerts. I believe there is something tomorrow at Highview at ten o'clock. Unfortunately, I will not be there because my son is in a show, so I will be at his show, and I can't miss that. He'll never let me forget that one. So I want to thank the community for their outpour of support. I've been watching their comments on social media and how much they appreciate what our music and art teachers are doing, and so I thank the art department for a job well-done once again in showcasing our talented students. My last comment tonight is very simple. I simply want to say, have a peaceful, restful holiday break. We deserve this break. It's a time for giving, but it's also a time for reflection. And when I reflect on our 2017, I must say, community and supporters and partners and teachers and staff, as well as our beloved students, we really had a stellar year. I look forward to another fabulous year in 2018 as we move toward world-class status. Even more so, I look forward in the year 2020 when we graduate our first IB class. Mr. Smith, that's on your watch. So I look forward to that as well. So thank you, community, for a fantastic year, and please enjoy the holiday break and enjoy your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Next on our agenda, the Assistant Superintendent for Business Report. Mary?
Thank you, good evening. The general fund beginning balance for October 2017 was $9,523,851.40. We received a total of $22,824,871.49 in receipts and issued $2,714,388.13 in payroll checks and another $1,639,680.50 in accounts payable checks. The ending balance for the general fund was $27,994,654.26, as detailed in your treasures reports. The district issued 953 payroll checks and 167 accounts payable checks for the month of October. I also wanted to give you a brief update on the high school gym. I think Mr. Smith would be very pleased at that. They nailed down, I believe they nailed down the last boards this afternoon. We still have some other things that we have to do. They still need to sand, seal, and stripe the floor. We still need to install the volleyball inserts and poly the floor and put in the base molding. They're hoping that this will be done by the end of the first week of school. I don't have a final date yet, though, for the installation of the padding, but they are moving along.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Smith.
Next up, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Mr. Williams?
Good evening. Since we last met, we had a meeting of the Governance Committee and the Government Relations Committee. And I'll read the report for the Government Relations Committee first. Committee members, first of all, present at the meeting were Dr. Chase, Antoinette Darnesentron, and Terri Williams. Claudia Glazer could not make it. Committee members discussed Assemblyman Abinanti's tax proposal, and we wanted to make a recommendation to the president to invite Mr. Abinanti to the upcoming retreat in January to speak with us about it, because Ms. Glazer was sick and could not attend when he had the committee meeting in town. We also discussed the opportunities to have the, we also wanted to have him discuss with us per trustee Glazer, Edgemont's plan to incorporate. He said previously to Ms. Glazer that he had some information that he wanted to share with us about that. Mary O'Neill shared some information about legal contacts that she had that might be able to advise us on our, on our plan to finance the construction of the consolidation. And Dr. Chase also said she would reach out to some of her contacts as well. The meeting adjourned at 7:17. Governance Committee, I'm sorry, Dave, you had a question?
Sure. In the interest of time, is it, is it the will of the board that I should extend an invitation to Thomas Abinanti for our retreat?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
We're good? Thank you.
Thank you. Governance Commission Committee, we discussed comments about, board members speaking about personnel, and that was a personnel item which we handled in executive session. We, we discussed the recommendation of limiting, trying to adhere to keeping the meeting to two hours, and we had some suggestions about how the vice president could help the president to manage the questions. I noted that when I was president, vice president, then Vice President Warner was very good at helping me manage people's questions, and I thought that that was something we could, you know, incorporate all the time. And that's not to say that our current vice president wasn't doing a good job, but that we should make that something kind of hard and fast. We also discussed, Ms. Darnesentron brought up that emails addressed to the school board, if it's received by a few board members, the email should also be sent to the missing board members who are not located on that, who are not copied on that. And I don't know how good this is going to be, but they selected me to mentor Tracy Mayor's. Tracy, you in trouble, girl.
I'm tough.
We also, as part of our, part of our charge, we made some recommendations for the upcoming board retreat. And again, these are only recommendations that Dr. Chase and David will finalize in their meeting. We had a, we wanted to make a governmental relations presentation, i.e. what we talked about with Assemblyman Abinanti. We wanted to, we recommended school board policy review process. Basically, what we're saying there is we don't want to spend so much time on policies at the meetings, but again, you know, you guys will decide. Mid-year board evaluation, budget preview, and someone had a question about the accelerated learning program preview. I think, Dr. Chase, maybe you brought that one up. The meeting, and we proposed that the retreat dates be January 20th, and again, just a recommendation, with an alternate snow date of January 27th. The Governance Committee meeting adjourned at 8:25. And thank you, Ms. Darnesentron, for these excellent notes.
Other committee reports?
Over here, David.
Mr. Newland?
Yeah, I have two reports, the physical planning meeting and the facility committee. The physical planning meeting met on November 13. An update was provided on questions raised from prior meetings. The district has posted three years of audits and two years of budgets on our website. The 1819 draft one budget will be posted sometime in January. We discussed current staffing in the district. We have 158 non-instructional and 264.4 instructional staff. The committee was provided with staffing demographics. We also review current enrollment with the prior months. It shows a decrease of 21 students. This is believed to be data cleanup. The committee requested comparison of our special education population and how we compare to the county and the state. The committee inquired if there was an industry standard for a number of students per social worker should be responsible for. The committee also discussed completing an updated five-year enrollment project. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 8 at 4:00 p.m. Moving on to the next report, the facility committee meeting met on November 13, immediately following the physical planning committee. There was a meeting set up with the architect to discuss the parapet walls of RJ Bailey. The outdoor lighting on the campus has been repaired, the press-back- the outdoor lighting on the campus has been repaired, the press-back box is near completion, and this time stairs are needed inside, countertop is needed, and fencing around the roof for photographies. The wraps for the fencing was slated for next year's budget discussion. A concern was raised about security around the press box area, and a discussion was held about the possibility of putting cameras in the area. We also had a walkthrough at RJ Bailey. The next meeting is scheduled for January 8 at 4:45 p.m. As you all might know, we built a press box down at the football field, and this is the details that I just reported to you. End of my report.
Thank you. Other committee reports?
Communication Committee?
Go ahead.
We met on Wednesday, December 13, via conference call. Members attended, Dr. Chase, Glazer, Alert, myself, Stephen Lewis, Miguel Varios, and Evelyn McCormick. We reviewed the agenda, we discussed making ourselves more highlighted on particular websites, one in specifically GreatSchools.org. We also discussed updating our parent emails. We currently have about 659, so we want to make sure that they're all in the system and that we maintain them and update them. We also discussed different ways to enhance our communications. So, for instance, one item was to have an opt-in-out regarding preferred vehicles of communications that parents can select. We discussed having our documents in regards to registration documents in multiple languages available. We've discussed condensing our registrations forms from 11, I believe, to, down to four, approximately a month until those changes are fully completed. We are meeting with FOCs to discuss implementation of the ADA website compliance that's coming up soon in January, and we're discussing ways to use applications that are cost-effective, such as using Google applications for closed caption services, moving our district videos to YouTube, so there's a variety of vehicles that we are trying to be more effective in how we use them, and with our spending as well. Enhancing our district website, adding the communication community goals to that, well, I believe, it says added soon here, but I believe I looked, and it has been already added, and I believe we're going to make sure that all of the committees will have that as well. Let's see, what else? There were some items that came out of our Woodlands PTSA meetings that was discussed as well, such as communications across all of our communication platforms need to be synced, so that no matter where you go, you're getting the same information. We discussed an idea that a parent brought up, having a test group for our website, so we can look at our ease of use of the website, effectiveness, and efficiency. One of our committee members, Miguel, suggested having a district website glossary page for acronyms and other things that may not be the norm for, you know, the average community member, but they will be able to be more knowledgeable. Have a building protocol to be shared with family regarding communication in attendance, whether their child has an appointment, who do they go to, who do they tell, different things like that. And we discussed some unresolved items from last school year that we will be looking into. So, one example is, we discussed having a video editing intern, but that's no longer needed. We discussed a school board policy on social media, and that actually is currently under review. Our meeting adjourned at 8:47. Our next meeting is scheduled as a conference call for January 31st. I believe it is at 6:30. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Other reports? I'm going to read the Community Engagement Report from December 13, December 13. The GCSD Community Engagement Committee met at the Greenberg Public Library on 12/13/17. The meeting convened shortly after 7:00 p.m. I've been asked not to read the list of attendees, but you all have the written copy. We introduced ourselves, adopted minutes of the 11/27 CEC meeting, briefly reviewed the status of the federal budget bill HR1, and the fact that the proposed state and local tax deduction ceiling is $10,000. That's what the Senate came back with as a compromise position. Reviewed the Princeton Review SAT Preparation Class Presentation, that's the one we had at the recent work session, and compared the results with the Khan Academy online preparation results claimed by NYSAT. I think we kind of came out a little bit ahead on that one. Heard a technology infrastructure presentation by Director of Technology and CIO Carlos Ramirez. Topics included technology and our strategic goals, progress towards a one-to-one student-to-device ratio, Wi-Fi upgrades, Chromebook and Smartboard replacement schedules, New York City smart schools funding, and FCC E-rate funding. We reviewed a list of upcoming holiday musical programs and other district events. We briefly reviewed the status of various robotics programs throughout the district, and we briefly reviewed the status of outstanding CEC issues. At the next meeting of the CEC, our guest speaker will be Todd Minch, Director of STEAM, who will update us on our district's technology curriculum. The meeting is Monday, January 8 at 7:00 p.m. at Woodlands Middle High School. All are welcome. Are there any other reports? Moving on to approvals. First item is instructional personnel items. So, do I hear a motion to approve the instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening, with the exception of items 2 and 3, which have already been approved? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Non-instructional personnel items. Do I hear a motion to approve the non-instructional items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Board action items. Do I hear a motion to approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Finance items. Do I hear a motion to approve the finance items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Business items. Do I hear a motion to approve the business items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Student services items. Do I hear a motion to approve the student services items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? New business. Do we have any items of new business suggested by other members of the board? All right, I think I have a couple. First, we need to schedule a retreat. We have a suggestion for a retreat with two different options. One is January 20th, the other is January 27th. I am available on either. Let me ask the Assistant Superintendent for Business, what sort of state will the budget be in on the 20th versus the 27th? Are we good?
We can keep the draft one.
Okay, good. So, who can make it on the 20th? Let's go down the line. Tracy?
Just give me a second, I got to check my calendar.
All right, take a look at it. Sure, I'll ask other people. 20th. Yes, no? Eric?
I think I'm okay, just checking my calendar.
Teri?
Yes.
Dr. Chase?
Yes.
Antoinette?
Yes.
Lloyd Newland? Claudia? Mary? Eric, is it a firm yes?
Tracy?
I believe I'm free on either day.
Okay, so I think we'll go with the 20th. Good?
Yes, that's the alternative. You want to put that in the notes, that the alternative day is?
Alternative is 27th, okay.
In the event of snow.
Of snow. Alternative if snow.
Of course.
Of course. All right. Next question, we have a suggestion, or at least I'd like to make a suggestion, that we have charges for committees of the district, we adopted those in the fall, but we don't have charges for the committees with the board, with one exception. And so, I would like for us to put that on the agenda, is that all right with you, Dr. Chase?
It is, yes.
All right, and given that, I would need input from the various existing committees as to, you know, drafts of their charges, so that we can review them prior to the actual retreat, and then discuss them at the retreat, with the expectation that we iron out what should be in each charge, and then vote in favor of them at a, probably a February meeting. So, the question is, are the members of the board willing to draft the charges?
I'm sorry, Mr. Warner, can I clarify? You need the committees to get together and meet before the retreat to be able to give you our draft of the charges?
You can meet if you don't have something historically that you can bring up, you can do a conference call, or you can meet in person. You will have to interact with the other committee members in order to come up with a draft, however.
Thank you.
Are you all right with that?
Me, yes.
Yes. Eric?
Yes.
Teri? I'm fine with it.
Yes.
Claudia?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're good. Okay. Yep. All right, I believe that's all I have for new business. Anyone else have any items? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourned.